Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 25th Legislative Session for the Salisbury City Council. I'll now call the meeting to order, and I'd like to welcome everybody, and please now join me in a moment of silent meditation or prayer. Thank you. Ms. Glanz, we have a proclamation tonight and service recognitions.
We do. Mr. President, good evening, everybody. I'd like to start, my gosh, that is bright on my face, sorry. I'm going to start with declaring the month of January, Human Trafficking Awareness Month. The governor actually proclaimed this statewide a week ago or so. So we are all in lockstep, which is pretty important on an issue of this topic. So whereas human trafficking is the recruitment harboring transportation provision or obtaining of a person for labor services through the use of force, fraud, or coercion for the purpose of forced labor or sexual servitude, and whereas human trafficking is a $32 billion a year global criminal enterprise and a crime as well as a civil and human rights violation. And whereas the United States government estimates that 600,000 to 800,000 individuals are trafficked across international borders each year and exploited through forced labor and forced commercial sexual activity. And whereas the United States is also a major destination country for international trafficking victims, as approximately 14,500 to 17,500 individuals are trafficked into the country each year. And these numbers do not include domestically trafficked children and adults. And whereas even though awareness of this crime is growing, human trafficking continues to go unreported due to its isolating nature, the misunderstanding of its definition, and the lack of awareness about its indicators, more awareness and education is crucial to eradicating human trafficking in our community, state, and nation. And whereas human trafficking is a crime that impacts both Maryland and the city of Salisbury directly, occurring within our state borders as well as our own community. And whereas increased community education on how to identify victims of human trafficking, along with increased knowledge of local resources and services for those affected by these criminal actions can help restore freedom and dignity to identified survivors, as well as help diminish the number of future victims. And whereas the city of Salisbury has a strong commitment to social justice and joins other communities in seeking to prevent human trafficking before it can occur by promoting safe, healthy, and supportive environments. Now therefore, I Julie Glan, City Administrator of the City of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim January 2021 Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month. And I would like to add that our Human Rights Advisory Committee asked us to acknowledge this important month, so I thank them for their calling this to attention.
Thank you.
And the next one that I have is much more fun. So today is the Tom Stevenson Show, and I think this week is going to be the Tom Stevenson Show. We made him super uncomfortable this morning at staff meeting, but he loved it, and he's going to miss us all. So Tom, you've got some of your family members, it looks like, on here as well. So I do want to say thank you to all of them and some colleagues for sharing you with the city for 32 years. I know there were lots of long nights and long weekends and long days and all of that, so thank you to all of them. But here is your proclamation, Tom. So whereas Field Operations Director Tom Stevenson is retiring on February 1st, 2021 after a distinguished 32-year career in a variety of capacities, including a five-year stint as City Administrator with the City of Salisbury, and is it appropriate to acknowledge his outstanding career and achievement? And whereas Tom was born and raised in Salisbury, Maryland, and began his career with this city in September of 1988 as a construction foreman, where experience in that position made him an ideal candidate for the position of Building Inspector with the city, and guess what? He got the job. Now whereas Tom is known for his work ethic, and it fueled his desire to expand his knowledge base and take on new challenges. He soon became licensed in the area of fire protection, family dwelling, and commercial building, which resulted in his promotion to Plans Examiner, where he was considered a tremendous asset by the Director of the Department of Building Housing and Zoning. And whereas Tom was again promoted in 2008 to Director of the New Form Department of Neighborhood Services and Code Compliance, a position he would occupy for only a brief time, as he would soon be called upon by the Mayor Jim Irtin to serve as Acting City Administrator, where his diligence and commitment to citizen service would shine brightly in his new capacity, as would his knowledge and understanding of the inner workings of municipal government. And whereas during his eventual tenure as City Administrator, Tom oversaw the hiring of Assistant City Administrator Julie Glans, now City Administrator Glans, and managed the crucial early stages of some of the city's most important projects, including but not limited to Main Street Master Plan and the Riverwalk Amphitheater. And whereas the city implemented structural changes in 2017, which led to the creation of several new departments which have previously been centralized, and Tom saw a unique opportunity to bring all of his knowledge to bear as the Director of the newly formed Department of Field Operations, the position he has held since 2017, and from which he will retire. And whereas the newly formed Department of Field Operations was responsible for parks, streets, and sidewalks, trash and recycling, fleet maintenance, and other tasks related to physical infrastructure, Tom was at the helm to guide the city through multiple storm events, massive infrastructure projects, and significant increase in events throughout the city to include but not limited to the National Folk Festival in the Salisbury Marathon. And whereas the city of Salisbury has been privileged to have Tom Stevenson as part of its municipal operations for 32 years, both staff and citizens have benefited from his comprehensive knowledge and ability to get things done, and will surely miss his steadiness and competent presence in the future. Now therefore, I Julie Glan, City Administrator of the City of Salisbury, do proclaim February 1st, 2021 as Tom Stevenson Day in our city in recognition of 32 years of dedicated public service. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Julia. That was, I'm sorry I had to try to wrap up 32 years there. That was quite a bit to have to say, but like I've said before, it's truly been an honor to work for the citizens of Salisbury and a privilege to work with the folks that I've had a chance to work with throughout the years. It was not an easy decision to make, but it's one that I'm comfortable with, so while I'm going to be leaving, I won't be going away, so I'll be seeing everybody, and I just want to thank you and everybody for the above and beyond, there were no expectations, but above and beyond to include delivered donuts that were made by Julia this morning for staff, so I appreciate that. But it's been an interesting 32 years and an honor to do it, so thank you.
On behalf of the council, and I'll let them say a couple of words if they'd like, but I'm going first. Thank you for everything you've done. I'm proud to be a friend of yours, as well as a council member that used to deal with you a lot. My friend, the only thing you had was one, you only had one weakness. You couldn't say no. And sometimes when you probably should have, you didn't. And thank God that you had the ability to manage and juggle, which was one of your best assets, I think. But we will miss you, there's no question, although we'll see you around, I'm sure. So thank you for everything you've done. I think most of the, some of the members at least, would want to say something about you, so I'll stop here.
Thank you, Jack, and just to be clear, I didn't know that no was an option all these years, but too late now.
Well, we forgot to tell you that. That's all right. Mayor, any comments?
Tom, we're grateful for your service, and it's great to have people like you who stick around, make a career out of it. Everything you've done for this city has been, you know, first rate, and we appreciate you, and we still want to know what's in the backpack every time you come into the chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Boda.
Um, Tom, gonna miss you. I know I've been a pain in your behind, Tom, but for real. I mean, everything I've ever asked for from you, you've always come through. And I'm going to miss that. Not saying that the other person is going to take your place is not going to appease me to some point, but you've been, you went far beyond for everything I've ever asked for, and you're going to truly be missed. And plus, you're one of my high school classmates, you know, we went to school together, and you know my brother very well, so it was some little tits and cats in there, but you're going to be missed, you're the person, and you've done great for the city, and seeing you move up through the ranks, you know, since I've been here, it's been phenomenal. So you be tired, relax, and unwind. But as Jack and Mira said, we will see you periodically because you can't stay away from us. You know you can't, so we'll see you. God bless you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Well, Tom, it's certainly well deserved. I mean, 32 years, you have nothing to look back and say, you know, anything but goodbye. Enjoy your time off and hope you enjoy the rest of whatever your adventures are. Thanks for everything you've done for the city.
Thank you.
I can't say much that hasn't already been said. I just want to say best of luck to you and enjoy it. Relax, you know, sleep in, have fun. And thank you for everything you've done for the city.
Thank you.
You're going to be hard to replace.
That's very kind of you. Thank you.
Okay. Tom, good luck to you, buddy.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay on, but you don't have to anymore, so.
Yeah, that's true, so I might just check out, and I want to say before I go, thank you to my family for, I forgot to mention them before, for putting out with me during these 32 years, so whoever's out there, thank you.
We thank them as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We also have, although I don't see grace on the call, we're supposed to have a kindness update?
Yeah, Jack, I think there was a scheduling error on my part, so we're going to reschedule.
Okay, no problem, no problem. All right, this time I'll call for a motion and a second to adopt the legislative agenda.
So moved.
I will give it to April, Ms. Jackson, and seconded by Ms. Blake. All those in favor of the legislative agenda as printed, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Vote is five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
We'll give it to Ms. Jackson, she was first, and we'll give it to Mr. Boda since he was second. Mrs. Nichols?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
For approval on the consent agenda tonight, we have the following. December 21st, 2020, special meeting minutes and work session minutes. January 4th, 2021, work session minutes. There are six manufacturing exemption requests, which over the next five years will receive a benefit in personal property taxes by the following amounts. Clean Air Filters LLC, $25,480. Jubilant Cadista Pharmaceuticals, Inc., $58,157. K&amp;L Microwave, $3,710. LWRC International LLC, $1,372. Pepsi Bottling Ventures LLC, $5,171. And Spartech LLC, $34,631. And this concludes the consent agenda for tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Nichols. I'll now call the motion on approving the consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The consent agenda is approved by a vote of five to zero. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2642 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Blake and Ms. Jackson. Good evening, Mr. Tillman.
Good evening. This is an ord, oh, I'm sorry. This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury, Maryland to eliminate parking spaces on Power Street from South Division Street to Wayne Street, and to eliminate the parking spaces on Wayne Street from Milford Street to Power Street in order to prevent traffic crashes and accommodate safe bicycle facilities around the east campus of Salisbury University. Whereas the City of Salisbury desires to encourage the use of bicycles throughout the city, and whereas the Salisbury Charter 11-2 gives the city charge of all public ways in the city, and whereas Power Street connects South Division Street to Wayne Street and all parcels except one are owned by the university, and all parcels have all street parking, and whereas Wayne Street connects Milford Street to Power Street, and all parcels on both sides are owned in their entirety by Salisbury University, and whereas the Department of Infrastructure and Development desires to build bicycle facilities in the area listed above and to resolve any issues that could lead to traffic crashes in keeping with the Vision Zero program, now therefore be it ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland that for purposes and the reasons here and above set forth, that the removal of parking spaces on Wayne Street and Power Street as set forth herein is hereby approved.
Thank you. Questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
No questions or comments.
Ms. Jackson?
No questions, no comments.
Excuse me. Did Mr. Tillman read 2643?
He read 2643. Yeah.
Wait a minute.
Yes, he did.
Yeah, I did.
I'll make a motion to vote on 2643 as read.
Okay, we have a motion, Mr. Boda. Do we have a second?
Second.
I think it misses, Mrs. Nichols is correct. I think I inadvertently just read 2646. Sitting here trying to scan down these things instead of having paper in front of me.
2643 is Milford Street.
Oh.
That's the one he just read.
That's the one you just read.
Okay, I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, so I need a second to, for 26, Ms. Jackson, okay. So yeah, Mr. Boda made the motion, Ms. Jackson made the second, and we just had the reading for 2643. So if questions or comments on 26, well, you already went through them, I guess. And Mr. Boda will do it again. Mr. Boda?
No questions or comments.
Ms. Jackson?
The only comments that I do have is I'm having a time with some people not understanding the safety of the bicycle lanes and things of that sort in the community, well, through the city. And I've explained it to them, as just as we have pedestrian crosswalks and we have lanes for cars, there must be some provision for bicyclists as well. They see it as not, we don't have as many bicyclists as we have motor vehicles, but it doesn't matter, we still have bicyclists, so we do need to keep them safe. I do explain that to them over and over again, and that's the only comment that I have, and we can go forth with it.
Thank you, thank you, April. This is Blake, question?
No questions, no comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Gregory.
I realized I was unmuted already. No questions or comments?
Thank you. I'll call the motion then, and this is on ordinance number 2643 for the second reading. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2643 is approved by a vote of five to zero. We'll now go back, and Mr. Tillman, if you agree to 2642, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I apologize. 2642 is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to sign the supplemental agreement and cost share agreement and accept a grant from the Maryland Department of Transportation State Highway Administration approving an amendment of the grant fund budget to allocate said funds for the purposes of implementation. Whereas the City of Salisbury executed a master memorandum of understanding with the Maryland Department of Transportation regarding federal aid projects on February 1st, 2018. And whereas the city desires to utilize the Maryland Department of Transportation memorandum of understanding to perform design services associated with the Naylor Mill Bridge Replacement Project, and whereas the project will replace aging infrastructure and enhance the safety of the transportation network for the city's residents and visitors. And whereas the Maryland Department of Transportation is awarded a grant in the amount of $377,106.18 to provide for the Naylor Mill Bridge design. And whereas the city's FY '20 Budget Ordinance Number 2539 included the projected grant amount of $280,000. And whereas the actual grant amount has been increased by $97,106.18 to $377,106.18. And whereas the city shall accept the grant in the form of reimbursement and transfer those funds from the reimbursement account to the grant account. Now therefore be it enacted and ordained that the City Council of the City of Salisbury does hereby authorize the mayor to sign the attached supplemental agreement accepting the project term and the attached cost share agreement for the betterment of the city and its residents and accept the grant of $377,106.18 from the Maryland Department of Transportation to perform the Naylor Mill Bridge design and further authorizes grant reimbursements to be transferred to the appropriate grant account. Further ordained that the city's grant fund budget be amended as follows. Increase the Maryland Department of Transportation Grant Revenue Account by $97,106.18. And two, increase the Engineering Expense Account by $97,106.18.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
No questions, no comments.
Ms. Blake?
No questions or comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Gregory.
No questions or comments.
Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2642, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2642 is passed by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2644 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Blake, Mr. Tillman?
Thank you. 2644 is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury, Maryland to eliminate 16 parking spaces on Fitzwater Street from Fitzwater Street to the main gate of Chesapeake Shipbuilding approximately 310 feet east in order to prevent traffic crashes and accommodate a previously approved safe bicycle facility on Fitzwater Street. Whereas the City of Salisbury desires to encourage the use of bicycles throughout the city, and whereas the Salisbury Charter 11-2 gives the city charge of all public ways in the city, and whereas Fitzwater Street has on-street parking along the south frontage of the street between Fitzwater Street and Main Street, and whereas removal of selected on-street parking from Fitzwater Street to the main gate of Chesapeake Shipbuilding will allow for safety improvements, and whereas Chesapeake Shipbuilding wholly owns all the property on that side of the street and supports the removal of parking. And whereas the Department of Infrastructure and Development desires to build bicycle facilities in the areas listed above and to resolve any issues that could lead to traffic crashes in keeping with the Vision Zero program, now therefore be it ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland that for the purposes and reasons here and above set forth, that the removal of 16 parking spaces on Fitzwater Street from Fitzwater Street to the main entrance of Chesapeake Shipbuilding is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
No questions or comments.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson?
No questions, but I do have a comment, and it's a good one. I'm glad that they considered doing this. There was a safety issue, is a dangerous curve where that parking is, and I've seen some things happen there, and I'm just glad that Chesapeake Shipbuilding took the time and took the time to just think about this and make it safe for everyone in the city of Salisbury.
Thank you, April. Ms. Blake?
No questions or comments.
Yep, Mrs. Gregory?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2644, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2644 is passed by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2645 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Blake? Mr. Tillman?
Thank you, Mr. Threeth. Ordinance 2645 is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury, Maryland to eliminate parking spaces on Power Street from South Division Street to Wayne Street, and to eliminate the parking spaces on Wayne Street from Milford Street to Power Street in order to prevent traffic crashes and accommodate safe bicycle facilities around the east campus of the Salisbury University. Whereas the City of Salisbury desires to encourage the use of bicycles throughout the city, and whereas the City Charter 11-2 gives the city charge of all public ways in the city, and whereas Power Street connects South Division Street to Wayne and all parcels except one are owned by the university, and all parcels have all street parking. And whereas Wayne Street connects Milford Street to Power Street, and all parcels on both sides are owned in their entirety by Salisbury University. And whereas the Department of Infrastructure and Development desires to build bicycle facilities in the areas listed above and to resolve any issues that could lead to traffic crashes in keeping with the Vision Zero program, now therefore be it ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland that for the purposes and reasons here and above set forth, that the removal of parking spaces on Wayne Street and Power Street as set forth herein is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
No questions or comments.
Ms. Jackson?
No questions, no comments.
Ms. Blake?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Mrs. Gregory?
No questions or comments.
Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2645, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2645 is approved by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2646 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda? Ms. Jackson? Mr. Tillman?
Thank you. Ordinance 2646 is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury, Maryland to eliminate parking spaces on West College Avenue from Lower Crop Drive to Camden Avenue in order to prevent traffic crashes and accommodate a previously approved safe bicycle facility on West College Avenue. Whereas the City of Salisbury desires to encourage the use of bicycles throughout the city, and whereas the Salisbury Charter 11-2 gives the city charge of all public ways in the city, and whereas West College Avenue has on-street parking along the south frontage of the street between Camden Avenue and Lower Crop Drive, and whereas the removal of on-street parking will allow for safety improvements, and whereas Salisbury University wholly owns all the property on that side of the street and supports the removal of parking, and whereas the Department of Infrastructure and Development desires to build bicycle facilities in the areas listed above and resolve any issues that could lead to traffic crashes in keeping with the Vision Zero program, now therefore be it ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland that for the purposes and reasons here and above set forth, that removal of the parking spaces from West College Avenue between Lower Crop Drive and Camden Street is hereby approved.
Questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
No questions or comments.
Ms. Jackson?
Questions or comments?
Ms. Blake?
No questions or comments.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions or comments.
I just want to make sure that it's Camden Avenue, correct, not Camden Street.
Did I read Camden Avenue this time?
Uh, no, we'll just, you read Camden Street, so. We got it. It's Camden Avenue. Okay, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two, six, four, six. Please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Ordinance number two, six, four, six is approved by a vote of five to zero. I want to obtain a motion to approve ordinance number two, six, four, sec, four, seven for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, this is Gregory. Mr. Tillman?
Thank you. Two, six, four, seven is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the city's. Special Revenue Fund Budget and to accept the appropriate donated funds. From the Bless Our Children Campaign for the Santa's Workshop Program, whereas the city of Salisbury's Housing and Community Development Department hosts a Santa's Workshop Program every year. And whereas Bless Our Children wishes to donate funds to help sponsor this annual program and whereas the donation of funds will be used. To purchase gifts, refreshments and equipment used to run the program and whereas these donations are to be used to protect the public welfare by purchasing toys to provide to children. And whereas the appropriations necessary for this donation must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of forfeits to the council of the city of Salisbury. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the city of Salisbury, Maryland. That the city's FY twenty one Special Revenue Fund being hereby is amended as follows. Increase contributions revenue account by two thousand dollars and increase the operating expense by two thousand dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
Just like I said before, on these two ordinances we're getting ready to do. They're just grateful of great fiscal management by our. Project managers and Keith and his team and quickly identifying these additional bond proceeds so they don't build up too long. And that we appropriate appropriately using so, uh, great job on that.
Ms. Jackson?
Um, no questions, no comments.
Ms. Blake?
No questions or comments.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. I just have one comment. I'd like to thank Draper Holding Company for for their great donation. I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two, six, four, seven for the second reading. Please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Ordinance number two, six, four, seven is approved by a vote of five to zero. I want to obtain a motion to approve ordinance number two, six, four, eight for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Blake, Mr. Tillman?
Thank you. Ordinance number two, six, four, eight is an ordinance of the Council of the City of Salisbury amending and supplementing ordinance number twenty three fifty seven. Passed by the council on October twelfth, two thousand fifteen, approved by the mayor of the city of Salisbury on October fourteenth, two thousand fifteen. And effective on October fourteenth, two thousand fifteen. In order to authorize and empower the city to use and apply certain investment earnings. On the four million, seven hundred twenty six thousand, two hundred dollars. City of Salisbury Public Improvement Bond of two thousand fifteen issued on December first, two thousand fifteen. To the project, to the projects identified herein as GOB roof and air handler replacement and wastewater treatment plant HVAC. And identify such additional projects as projects for all purposes of ordinance number twenty three fifty seven. Providing that this title is a fair statement of the substance of this ordinance. Authorizing certain city officials to take certain actions in connection with the transactions contemplated by this ordinance. Providing that the provisions of this ordinance shall be liberally construed and otherwise generally. Relating to the use of the proceeds of the two thousand fifteen bond. And the charts that are attached set forth the reallocations.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Excuse me. Questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
Well, I think my previous comment was meant for this one because I was doing what Mark did reading ahead. So what I said before here.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
No questions, no comments.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
No questions or comments.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two, six, four, eight, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Ordinance number two, six, four, eight is approved by a vote of five to zero. I want to obtain a motion to approve ordinance number two, six, four, nine for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, who is the second please, Ms. Jackson? Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Tillman.
Thank you. Ordinance number twenty six forty nine is an ordinance of the council of the city of Salisbury amending and supplementing ordinance number twenty four sixty three. Passed by the council on November thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, approved by the mayor of the city. On November fifteenth, two thousand seventeen and effective on November fifteenth, two thousand seventeen. In order to authorize and empower the city to use and apply a portion of the principal amount of the five million, seven hundred twenty four thousand, eight hundred fifty three dollars. City of Salisbury Public Improvements Bond of two hundred seven, of two thousand seventeen issued on December thirteenth, two thousand seventeen plus certain investment earnings thereon. To the projects identified herein is GOB roof and air handler replacement. And one ton dump trucks sanitation and parks in addition to the projects originally identified in the ordinance number twenty four sixty three and. To identify such additional projects as projects for all purposes of the ordinance twenty four sixty three. Providing that this title is a fair statement of the substance of this ordinance authorizing certain city officials to take certain actions in connection with the transaction. Contemplated by this ordinance, providing that the provisions of this ordinance shall be liberally construed. And otherwise generally relating to the use of the proceeds of the two thousand seventeen bond. And as before, there's a chart in here showing where the money has been from what project it's come and where it's going.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
No questions or comments.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson?
No questions, no comments.
Ms. Blake?
No questions or comments.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions or comments.
Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two, six, four, nine for the second reading. Please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Ordinance number two, six, four, nine is approved by a vote of five to zero. I want to obtain a motion to approve ordinance number two, six, five, zero for the second reading.
So moved.
Second. Second.
Ms. Blake, Mrs. Gregory? Mr. Tillman?
Thank you. Ordinance twenty six fifty is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with the Salisbury Wycomico Metropolitan Planning Organization. For the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of seven thousand dollars and to approve a budget amendment to the grant fund. To appropriate funds for offsetting RFP twenty one, one oh one port feasibility study. Whereas the city of Salisbury solicited qualified vendors for a request for proposal for a port feasibility study to act to assess the economic and physical feasibility of a multi-user port along Wycomico. Along the Wycomico River. And whereas the Salisbury Wycomico Metropolitan Planning Organization is a federally designated regional transportation planning agency for the urbanized area encompassing Sussex County, Wycomico County. And a small portion of Somerset County and whereas. SWMPO coordinates with appropriate authorities and departments of all impacted state and local governments in an effort to assist with solving regional problems. And implementing regional goals and policies and whereas SWMPO desires to support the city's efforts to. Perform the study and whereas the city of Salisbury must enter into a memorandum of understanding with SWMPO. Defining how the funds must be expended and whereas all funds shall be used to offset the cost of hiring a consultant to perform the study. And whereas SWMPO requests two separate presentations of the final study to the SWMPO. Technical Advisory Committee and the SWMPO Council. And will add the SWMPO logo to the final study along with a language confirming that the funding. Was provided for SWMPO and whereas seven dash two nine of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure. Not appropriated or authorized by the city council and whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purposes of this grant. Must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of forfeits to the council of the city of Salisbury now therefore be it ordained. By the city council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland that Mayor Jacob R. Day is authorized to. Enter into a grant agreement with the Salisbury Wycomico Metropolitan Planning Organization to accept grant funds in the amount of seven thousand dollars. Be it further ordained that the city's grant fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows. Increase the port feasibility donated matching fund account by seven thousand and increase the consulting fees expense account by seven thousand.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
Now, this is just, this is gonna be great for our economy. And a great way for us to leverage the asset of our port and the river.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson?
Um, no questions, but the comment I concur with mayor, um, and that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
No questions or comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Gregory?
No questions, just want to third what they were saying about it being a great opportunity for the city.
Thank you. I'll now call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two, six, five, zero, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Ordinance number two, six, five, zero is approved by a vote of five to zero. I want to obtain a motion to approve ordinance number two, six, five, one for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Blake, Mr. Tillman?
Thank you. Ordinance twenty six fifty one is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving an amendment of the city's water sewer capital project fund budget. To reallocate funding for the wastewater treatment plant HVAC project. Whereas the HVAC system for the main building of the wastewater treatment plant is in need of replacement and whereas the city has received an estimated ninety thousand dollars. To replace the system and whereas there are available funds from interest accrued. On the FY twenty sixteen bond issue that was approved by the city council on October fourteenth, two thousand fifteen and issued on December first, two thousand fifteen now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland. That the city's water and sewer capital projects fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows. Under the description revenues wastewater treatment plant HVAC interest revenue. Not is ninety thousand dollars is added and under the expenditure category for construction ninety thousand dollars is added.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
No questions or comments.
Ms. Jackson?
No questions, no comments.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
No questions or comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Gregory.
No questions or comments.
Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two, six, five, one, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Ordinance number two, six, five, one for the second reading is approved by a vote of five to zero. I want to obtain a motion to approve ordinance number two, six, five, two for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Blake? Ms. Jackson, Mr. Tillman?
Ordinance two, six, five, two is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to sign the grant agreement, accept grant of four thousand dollars. From the state of Maryland Department of Natural Resources Critical Area Commission and approving an amendment of the grant fund budget to allocate the funds for the purposes of critical area program implementation. Whereas ordinance number twenty five seventy eight dated February twenty sixth, two thousand twenty gave the Department of Infrastructure Development the responsibility of overseeing. City's critical area program and whereas the state of Maryland Department of Natural Resources Critical Areas Commission. Provides an annual grant in aid to assist local governments with implementation of the critical area program functions. And whereas grant funds may only be used to support local personnel administrative costs or consulting services utilized for the direct implementation. Of the local critical area program and whereas the funds are proposed to be utilized to fund a portion of the city. Planner's salary and whereas the budget amendment will allocate the FY twenty one grant funds. To the implementation of the critical area program functions now therefore be it enacted and ordained. That the city council, the city of Salisbury, Maryland is hereby authorized the mayor to sign the attached grant agreement. Accepting the project terms and the and accept the grant of four thousand dollars from the state of Maryland Department of Natural Resources Critical Area Commission. For the implementation of the critical area program functions and further authorizes grant reimbursements to be transferred to the appropriate grant account. Be it further ordained that city's grant fund budget be amended as follows increase the Critical Area Commission Grant Revenue Account by four thousand dollars. Increase the planning salary grant account by four thousand dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
No questions or comments.
Ms. Jackson?
No questions or comments.
Ms. Blake?
No questions or comments.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two, six, five, two for the first reading. Please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Ordinance number two, six, five, two for the first reading is approved by a vote of five to zero. Entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two, six, five, three for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson, Mr. Tillman?
Two, six, five, three is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving an amendment of the city's general capital project fund budget to reallocate funding. For the police communication project whereas the police communication project has sixty thousand dollars of available funds currently assigned for the purchase of workstations. And whereas the procurement department issued an RFP for the workstations and the lowest bid received was ninety eight thousand, seven hundred seventy seven dollars. Exceeding the available funds by thirty eight thousand, seven hundred seventy seven dollars. And whereas there is ten thousand, six hundred seventy four dollars and twelve cents previously allocated for the purchase. Of two vehicles for the Department of Field Operations that is now available to be reallocated to cover part of the shortfall. And whereas there is thirteen thousand, forty eight dollars and thirty four cents previously allocated. To the bond issue cost that is now available to be reallocated to cover part of the shortfall and whereas there is fifteen thousand, fifty four dollars and fifty four cents. In interest accrued on bond proceeds not previously allocated. It is now available to be reallocated to cover part of the shortfall now therefore be it ordained. By the city council, the city of Salisbury, Maryland that city's general capital projects fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows. And there is a addition to the police revenue bond proceeds of ten thousand, six hundred seventy four dollars and twelve cents. A reduction in the field operations vehicle bond proceeds by ten thousand, six hundred seventy four dollars and twelve cents and an increase in the police communications equipment by ten thousand, six, seventy four, twelve. And a decrease in the field ops vehicle account of ten thousand, six hundred seventy four dollars and twelve cents. Under police communications revenue, there's an increase of thirteen thousand, forty eight dollars and thirty four cents under the cost of bond issuance. There's a decrease of thirteen thousand, forty eight dollars and thirty four cents under police communications expense. There is a increase of thirteen thousand, forty eight dollars and thirty four cents and under cost of bond issuance, there's a decrease of thirteen thousand, forty eight dollars and thirty four cents. And finally, under the police communication revenue interest, there's an increase of fifteen thousand, fifty four dollars. And finally, under the police communication revenue interest, there's an increase of fifteen thousand, fifty-four dollars and fifty-four cents. And the cost of bond expense account is also increased by fifteen thousand, fifty-four dollars and fifty-four cents.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Questions or comments? Mr. Boda?
Just kudos to who found all those different little pots of money that were sitting around. So had a great job.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
No questions or comments.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. I'll now call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two-six-five-three for the first reading, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Ordinance number two-six-five-three for the first reading is passed by a vote of five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Tillman.
Thank you.
Who's gonna do the resolutions tonight? Ms. Glanz or Mr. Kitchrow?
Oh, I will.
Okay. I just want, I didn't want to make him feel like he was left out.
I mean, we can give them all to him. I don't mind.
Yeah, we'll let you, we'll let you do it. Good to see you, Mr. Kitchrow.
Good to be seen.
I want to attain a motion to approve resolution number three-zero-eight-six.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Blake?
Resolution number three-zero-eight-six, a resolution of the Council of the City of Salisbury entitled a resolution amending and supplementing resolution number two-five-six-nine adopted by the council on November twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, approved by the mayor on November twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, and effective on November twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen in order to one authorize and empower City of Salisbury the to use and apply certain investment earnings on the four million, seven hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred dollars City of Salisbury Public Improvement Bonds of two thousand and fifteen issued on December one, two thousand and fifteen to projects identified herein as GOB roof and air handler replacement wastewater treatment HVAC in addition to projects originally identified in the resolution number two-five-six-nine and two to identify such additional projects as projects for all purposes of resolution number two-six-five-nine authorizing and empowering city officials and employees to take certain actions with respect to the two thousand and fifteen bond, providing that the provisions and the resolution shall be liberally construed and otherwise generally relating to the use of proceeds of the two thousand and fifteen bond.
Thank you, Ms. Glanz. Questions or comments? Mr. Boda?
No questions or comments.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson?
No questions, no comments.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
No questions or comments.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. I'll call the motion. All those in favor of resolution number three-zero-eight-six, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Resolution number three-zero-six-eight is approved by a vote of five to zero. I want to attain a motion to approve resolution number three-zero-eight-seven.
So moved?
Second.
Ms. Blake, Ms. Jackson? Ms. Glanz?
Resolution number three-zero-eight-seven, a resolution of the Council of the City of Salisbury entitled a resolution amending and supplementing resolution number two-seven-nine-four adopted by the council on November twenty-seventh, two thousand and seventeen, approved by the mayor on November twenty-eighth, two thousand and seventeen, and effective on November twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen. In order to one authorize and empower City of Salisbury to use and apply a portion of the principal amount of the five million, seven hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars City of Salisbury Public Improvement Bonds of the two thousand and seventeen issue on December thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen, plus certain investment earnings thereon to projects identified as the GOB roof and air handler replacement and to and to one-ton dump truck sanitation in parks in addition to the projects originally identified in resolution number two-seven-nine-four and to and to identify such additional projects as projects for all purposes of the resolution number two-seven-nine-four authorizing and empowering city officials and employees to take certain actions with respect to the two thousand and seventeen bond, providing that the provisions of this resolution shall be liberally construed and otherwise generally relating to the use of proceeds of the two thousand and seventeen bond.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Mr. Boda?
No questions or comments.
Ms. Jackson?
No questions, no comments.
Ms. Blake?
No questions or comments.
Mrs. Gregory?
No questions or comments.
Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of resolution number three-zero-eight-seven, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Resolution number three-zero-eight-seven is approved by a vote of five to zero. I want to attain a motion to approve resolution three-zero-eight-eight.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Blake? Ms. Glanz?
Resolution number three-zero-eight-eight, a resolution of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, approving and adopting the Environmental Policy Task Force report. Whereas in February twenty-twenty, Mayor Jacob R. Day convened an environmental policy task force to develop recommendations for environmental policy goals. And whereas the Environmental Policy Task Force was comprised of local citizens and professionals in the field of environmental issues, planning and engineering. And whereas the Department of Infrastructure and Development was charged with staffing the Environmental Policy Task Force, facilitating its meetings and assisting in the preparation of a report. And whereas the City of Salisbury strives to be a more environmentally sustainable city. And whereas the department and the development and implementation of the report demonstrates the commitment of city officials to reducing the city's environmental impact. And whereas the Environmental Policies Task Force is a guiding document for the mayor, city council, and departments of Salisbury, setting forth recommendations and prioritizing projects and initiatives based on environmental sustainability. And whereas the Department of Infrastructure and Development desires to begin executing the various projects and strategies outlined in the report to the benefit of the residents and visitors of the City of Salisbury. And whereas the Director of the Department of Infrastructure and Development shall make a yearly progress report to council in an open forum prior to January thirty-first, beginning in January twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you, Ms. Glanz. Questions or comments? Mr. Boda?
I just want to thank everybody that worked on task force and all the hard work that went into this report over the past year. So just great job, everyone.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
Um, no questions, but I concur with Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
Uh, no questions or comments.
Thank you. Mrs. Gregory?
No questions, just want to reiterate how much hard work went into this and thank everybody who was involved.
Thank you. I also want to commend the task force. And this is one of those documents that it's like the plan for Main Street. It's the outline. And I will say that the thing that we've become very good at in the city is sticking to our plans. And I'm looking forward to the implementation part of this, which is the important part. And then once the implementation is done, we'll reap the rewards of all the things that we're doing. So thank again to the task force. A wonderful job. I'll now call the motion. All those in favor of resolution number three-zero-eight-eight, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Resolution number three-zero-eight-eight is approved by a vote of five to zero. At this time, we are going to go into closed session, but before we do that, I will so the people don't have to stay around if if they don't want to. Is there anybody that wants to have a public comment? Please identify yourself. All right, hearing none. We'll now enter into closed session. Stated in these statute authority to close session, the state government article is three-dash-three-oh-five B. And the purpose is to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, the motion compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom the public body has jurisdiction or any other personnel matter that affects one or more of the specific individuals.
I'll make a motion to go into closing.
Enter into close. Yeah.
I second.
You're gonna.
And I second.
I think, I think Mrs. Gregory had it before that. Am I correct?
No, she got it. She beat me to it. She beat me to it. You guys are quick on that mute button. I'm not as fast.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
You're welcome.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Oh.
Aye.
Ms. Jackson? It's been a long meeting.
It has been. Certainly, I do.
This is Gregory.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. We are now, we are now in closed session with a vote of five to zero. Thank you, everyone. We are back from a closed session. And during that discussion, during that session, we discussed the appointment of a new director for the city. And that will be announced shortly. We thank everybody for their attendance. Closing comments, if you have any, I'll go around the room real quick. Mr. Boda?
Uh, no, just keep supporting our local businesses. I think, you know, I think we're once everybody gets the vaccine and it gets implemented, I think we're going to be on well on the road to recovery. And looking forward to seeing everybody again.
Thanks, Mayor. Ms. Jackson?
Um, just stay safe. And if you can't get the vaccine, get it.
You? Ms. Blake?
If you're healthy enough, by all means, please donate blood, please. We're very desperate.
Thank you. This is Gregory.
Just stay safe, wear your mask, please stay home if you can. And please sign up to get the vaccine.
Yes, and I have, the only thing I have to say is besides the blood, give blood if you can. Wear your masks. We're not out of this yet. The numbers are starting to look good. But that doesn't mean we can all go out and party. So let's pay attention. Ms. Glanz, anything from you?
I would just add to the vaccine kick. We don't have enough vaccines for everyone. We won't for a while, so you're really just gonna have to be patient and refresh those links as much as you can, unfortunately. But in the meantime, and while we're all getting vaccinated, I echo the comments of distancing and masking up. So.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your participation tonight. Good to see everybody. We'll see you next week.
Have a good evening.
The meeting's adjourned.